Welcome to the Celine City Planning Commission meeting of April 27, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you could please take role. Chairperson Carroll is absent. Vice Chair Young.
Here.
Secretary Treasurer Heft.
Here.
Mayor Morrow.
Here.
Councilmember Girba.
Here.
Staff Rep. Weberning.
Here.
Mr. Beardsley is absent. Mr. Fosdick.
Here.
And Mr. Chorica is absent. Staff City Planner Auerbeck.
Here.
City Manager O'Toole.
Here.
And I'm Clerk Royal. I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended or distributed.
Move to approve as distributed, Madam Chair.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 13, 2022, as amended or submitted.
So moved as submitted.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. City Manager O'Toole would like to make a statement about the role of Planning Commission.
Thank you. Just briefly before we open for the public hearing and public comment, I felt for the public's benefit, we should take this opportunity to quickly clarify the role of Planning Commission. This body is primarily charged with reviewing and considering whether requests meet the requirements of existing city ordinances. This body typically considers things like actual site plan reviews and the land use impacts of those. Members of the Planning Commission are statutorily required to make these reviews free from prejudice, meaning regardless of any personal sentiment about the end use of that development. This body also does not approve special land use requests. That authority lies with the City Council. They will simply recommend or not recommend a special land use or apply certain conditions when making that recommendation to City Council. Special land use will be considered at the City Council meeting on May 16, and there will be a public hearing specifically for that as well.
Thank you very much. In addition, I believe we are streaming on Facebook. I just want to make it known that we are not monitoring comments on Facebook. All comments had to be submitted to the clerk or deputy clerk to be read aloud as part of public comment. Citizen comments. Under the Open Public Meeting Act, any citizen may come forward at this time to make comment. The person is requested but not required to state their name and address for record. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person, and the citizen comment period will be limited to forty-five, to a total of forty-five minutes. I'd like to open citizen comments.
Hi. Gaines Collins, 137 Common Circle. I live right down the street from Dairy Twist. (laugh) Excuse me. I live right down the street, and I just can't imagine this being the gateway to Celine from the west, or coming east. It's a family area right now, and families go to get ice cream there, and then it's going to turn into marijuana. I just don't, I don't understand why we would want that on Michigan Avenue. Thank you.
Hi, Ben Goodman. I also live at that in town. I'd like to echo everything she said, but I'd like to add on a lot of things that you did not consider in the last meeting, and we need to look at that shopping plaza right there, is there's a school there. It's a daycare, and it's a preschool. There's children in there. Children, they get dropped off by their parents right across the street from where this is going to be. There's families that walk along that sidewalk, that take their kids to Curtis Park, or cross the street, go to Milpon Park. Families. You're talking a dangerous curb cut right there. Doesn't matter what construction you do, you're going to have cars flying in and out of there. Families live down there, neighborhoods, community members. It's not a good spot really for anything, but you're taking an establishment that's well-loved by this community, that people, a majority of people walk to, because they don't like parking down there, because they get threatened by Radio Shack to have their car towed. So we walk. We walk, and we take our families down there, and now it's not going to be safe to do that anymore. You need to consider that. It's not harmonious. You talked about harmonious last meeting. Daycare there, dangerous curb cut, neighborhoods, schools, children, families. There's no harmonious. You can vote no tonight. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment in the room?
Can everybody hear me okay? It sounds like I can't pick you up. I'm a little bit nervous to speak in public, especially for my first time in public hearing here. I have lived here my entire life. I am 25 years old. My name is Addison, by the way. I do, so I saw this on an article online, and today is actually the anniversary of my fiancee and I's first date, and I was going to go out to a dinner, but chose to cancel that in lieu of this meeting, and I wanted to attend it. So, if I can collect myself here, hang on just a second. Are you guys already planning on constructing a building to change Mickey's Dairy Twist? Like, is this already, is this like, just people are going to say yes or no to this and try to make an opinion made?
Addison.
Yeah.
Generally during public comment period, either at the City Council level or Planning Commission, we don't engage in a back and forth of Q and A.
Okay.
So this is simply an opportunity for you to raise concerns or to state your opinion.
Okay.
And generally, as a rule, we will address those when we get into the substance of the meeting under Business Item 22-10.
Okay, so we'll just relay our concerns, and then you'll go over them during the meeting later. Okay, very good. If we are already planning on doing something, I heard that it was approved for the land to get built by Loom right next to Zippy's to have a dispensary as well, I would like to make the analogy that if we don't really know how this is going to operate in Celine, or if we don't really know how this is going to go since we don't already have one, it'd be like buying a house, getting a new mortgage, and all of a sudden you want to extend your budget and say, no, let's do the bathrooms and the tile, and do the kitchen all at once. I would have the opinion that it may be a little bit fast to then already agree on a second building or spot, especially if we don't really know how it's going to blend with the community. I do care a lot about this area. It is my source of income. I really enjoy these people here. I've grown up here my entire life. I graduated from Celine High School. I've already said that, but not the Celine part. But I, I had a conversation with one of my friends an hour before this, who loves to smoke marijuana, and she is in a high position at her job, and I had the opinion that if you smoke weed or marijuana, you're more or less a degenerate, which is not the case. And I'm finding that that is changing. And I would like to think that my opinion too can change in this, because I do not necessarily agree with doing this plan, but one of my other good friends who's going to be standing at my wedding, may I continue if nobody else had comments? I know you had a strict three-minute rule.
We limit to three minutes. Thank you.
I wasn't going to come up here, but I'm Patricia Sheets, I live in Torwood subdivision. My husband and I have lived here for going in 24 years. I did write a letter today to the City Council, I sent it to the City Clerk and the entire City Council. And the reason why I'm up here today, I think it's better in person so you hear my voice rather than just the letter. My biggest concern is the west side. There's always been an issue with the west side. We just, and we've been to multiple meetings where we've tried to decide what to do with Celine and have it more inviting. We have always expressed concerns on the west side of being inviting and welcoming. We kind of feel forgotten over there, so we just, we make do with what we have. We've tried to make the bridge nice. We've tried to plant flowers, but to me, when you add something like a business that, to me, I mean marijuana is legal, and I get that, I understand that. I have friends that, I understand the situation. I just want to make sure that that, the west side is not forgotten, and then when people enter our city on that side, that it's welcomed, and we have nicer, we have nice businesses like an ice cream shop, rather than a marijuana dispensary where families go, and we want to be able to walk to downtown Celine and not have to pass over businesses that we're not sure if they're people from our own community. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak?
Yep, I'm going to read a letter I wrote, my first time probably speaking to. I don't really like it, but I feel I need to have my voice heard as well. Hi, my name's Bonnie. I'm the owner of Mickey's. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts. As a single mom, I worked 25 years in a bakery. Realized I was not going to be able to have enough time, enough money to retire, and I had to do something. I dreamed about owning my own business, and when my son presented the idea of me buying Mickey's, I did. I took every savings I had for my new adventure. My goal was to run the business for about five years and to better my retirement. I made that clear with all my supporters at Mickey's. Over time, I became a part of the community that I do love. I couldn't ask for a better experience. I've enjoyed the young teens here that's worked for me. I hope I've been able to be an influence on their lives and gave them some good work ethics. The community has been very supportive, and I appreciate it more than everybody knows. I have enjoyed watching the young grow, the families and friends gather, and it's been a heartfelt experience to me. But I'm ready to retire. I want to spend a few good years enjoying my children and my grand, soon to be 13 grandkids. I worked very hard to make it, make this my day to, and I deserve a retirement. I've spent early mornings and late nights making Mickey's the best place I could, and you all have been able to enjoy the fruit, benefits of the fruits of my, my labor, and I'm very proud of that part. I was approached by AM and BH Industries about purchasing my property. They offered a generous amount, more than I would ever get for an ice cream shop. I feel that was a gift to God so that I could retire without worries. Instead, I'll be able to spend time with my family and enjoy my retirement, and as, as everyone is obviously in this room want to retire one day. While waiting for the sale to go through, I've struggled with people calling my blessing a backdoor deal, a crying shame, a way to steal my icon of the community. I'm sorry, but Mickey's is not the property of Celine. It's mine. I've worked it. I've maintained it. I, I work hard in it. I've paid for it. I should have as much right as any private business owner in this, to sell my property. Anyone in their right mind would have taken this offer, just as the city has taken their offer. B, or AM and BH has given me a chance to reap benefits of my sacrifices for a nice retirement. I know they'll do right by the community as well. I understand that Mickey's has been a special place to the community, and I'm proud of that reputation. I couldn't have asked for a better way to end my career, and I wish I could have done it 20 years earlier, because I've enjoyed every second of it. But now there, now there are younger, more financial, comfortable people in this community that I have no doubt could build a business like Mickey's, and I would gladly cheer them on, and I'd hope the council would give them a chance to do that as well and allow me mine. I would like to thank my friends and family that stand by me through the years, and especially the last couple of months for standing with me. I appreciate you, and I thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak? Clerk Royal, would you like to start with emails received? Yes, I received, I believe, 10 public comments.
Excuse me. Sorry. May I, may I say something else if we had 45 minutes of allotted time to speak?
Well, I've got 33.
You get three minutes at this, at this juncture.
Okay.
So, we do, we do stick pretty strict to rules and in fairness to everyone.
Okay.
So the first one is from Trish Farrell, and she states, "We are deeply saddened and disappointed in the purchase agreement with Loom, a cannabis company, and now in the consideration of selling Mickey's Dairy to another cannabis dispensary. We are in complete disagreement and had to speak up. We do not feel that it is the advantage for the city of Celine to bring dispensaries into our town. We are frustrated with how close and accessible Loom is to the high school, and both potential dispensaries being on our main route into our sweet little town. It is, is not an accurate representation of who we are. Is that really how we want to represent ourselves to those driving through? I feel like Celine Main Street and our Chamber of Commerce has worked so hard to create an incredible downtown atmosphere. Adding dispensaries is a huge step backwards, specifically in regards to Mickey's being sold. Our daughter has worked there and loved it every single summer. As so many people before her, Mickey's is a hub of family time in the summer. So many precious memories have been made there. Although Bonnie has every right to sell and retire, I encourage the city not to sell to a cannabis company. We are adamantly opposed to that property becoming another dispensary. That property being sold to another dispensary does not help Celine achieve its goals for the future. The vision that has been laid forth for the future of our town becomes vulnerable with the increase of cannabis dispensaries. There are too many risks and negative consequences to such a sale. It is necessary and not worth the damage it presents. Increase in crime and traffic while lowering property values and changing the face of our town. Celine is booming for a reason and has become a destination to move to. That positive movement forward is not worth risking. We plead with the council to decline the sale of Mickey's to a dispensary for the sake of the future of our town." And then she did send a comment saying, "I understand that a private property sale, the city does not have control over invested companies such as in the case of Mickey's." So, the next one is from Ed Carrico, and he says, "My concerns is with limited parking between the new marijuana site and that the parking behind the site, property owned by my partners and I, will not only be used for parking but for usage. There is no fence between the properties. If need be, I will post no trespassing signs, but past experience with that is they don't work. I would like a fence erected between the properties. In addition, with six trailer apartments very near, parking won't be the problem, but foot traffic will. How will this area be enforced for public consumption in that area?" Next one is Susan Morales. "I'm writing to ask Planning Commission Board to reconsider the plan to possibly turn Mickey's into a dispensary. We live in Torwood and have spent many nights walking there with our family to sit and enjoy an ice cream. Our kids now bike there and want to work there when they are owed enough to be employed. It employs many teenagers and is a wholesome place where the Celine families together. Our city doesn't have many places for kids to hang out outside of school and school sports. They have Imagine, Rec Center, Dairy Queen, and Mickey's. We and the schools raising our children, we and the schools raising our children not to use drugs. What message is it to take away their ice cream store and turn it into a dispensary? I don't want the Celine children to look out their bus, school bus, on the way to and from school and see a dispensary instead of ice cream. I also feel some of the more at-risk population lives close to the proposed dispensary, putting them even more in harm's way. I have family-in-law enforcement in Ann Arbor, and they do have problems with dispensaries. There are armed robberies, theft, overdoses, and impaired driving. Why would we put this in a residential area so close to so many Celine families? I'm begging you not to let this happen. Thank you for your time." The next one is from Thomas Groom, and he says, "I would like to express my voice against the proposal to use the site of Mickey's Dairy Twist for a new marijuana dispensary. In light of the fact that the City Council recently approved the sale of a lot on East Michigan Avenue to the Loom Cannabis Company, a second marijuana dispensary seems excessive and conveys the wrong message to our youth and to the community. Mickey's Dairy Twist has always been a great employer for our young people, and turning the site into a source for marijuana goes completely in the wrong direction. Multiple studies ranging from CDC, the NIH, to major universities, including the Harvard Medical School, substantiate the harmful effects of marijuana on young people." It says, "See attached article links. I understand the owners of Mickey's Dairy Twist have the right to sell their property, but I strongly recommend it not involve transferring the property to a company that increases marijuana distribution in our community." The next one's from Jennifer Stevan. "First, you know, I will say thank you for your commitment to public service. As I know, it is not an easy job and is always under scrutiny, but like you, I enjoy hearing what community members think. Some messages are a bit harder to read than others, and some praise or suggestions, but all are read thoroughly and taken in. Thank you in advance for taking in my feedback. As president of this Board of Education, I frequently receive feedback or folks stop me to give me their perspectives on various issues. Several have approached me on the possible conversion of Mickey's Dairy Twist to a dispensary. Most did not mention this to me in the lens of it being a dispensary, but rather as a local favorite place for the children. I have told them that the schools are not related to that topic, but I listened, and frankly, I agree with them that, that this conversion should not occur. My children reside on what could be called the western side of town. While we are close to town, thank you sidewalks, we are further from other things, so enjoy our little areas to play and walk. Mickey's is a big favorite and many children on the west, west side. To think of it being replaced by anything that would not be an activity for kids is frankly disappointing. I'd like the city to engage in more family-friendly development, not less. Activities for family can and should be a big draw for Celine. Partner with our excellent school system, my bias noted, I wanted these kids to make memories, go to the park, get a cone, not have no place to go with their bikes. They are hungry for a little bit of independence and treats, so please do not allow this to move forward. Place families first, and let's enjoy summer at Mickey's." The next one is from Rebecca Godak. "My family has resided in Celine since 2002. We have been loyal supporters of local business and restaurants for the past 20 years. Mickey's Dairy Twist has been one of our favorites, and both of my sons worked there while attending Celine High School. My family will miss Mickey's, but I fully support the passing of this pending sale. Regardless of the business that replaces the existing one, Bonnie should be afforded the same opportunities as others to make the best decision for her. I am confident that the city of Celine will provide Bonnie a level playing field, as you have done with the approval of Loom. Best regards." The next one is from David McManer, Mc, sorry. It says, "In 2015, my family and I moved to Celine. As our neighbors were welcoming us to the area, we heard from several people that we should go to Mickey's Dairy Twist. It became a place we went regularly for a treat. In March of 2018, both of our older two children started working at Mickey's. Our older daughter has now started her fifth year of working there. We have gotten to know the owner, Bonnie, through our children working there. With Mickey's seeming to be the kind of Celine icon, I hate it, I hate to see it be sold. I understand Bonnie bought Mickey's not long before we moved here, intending to own the business for a few years to help save for retirement. I think she has done a fabulous job running Mickey's, and I know how much of a challenge the last two years have been for many small businesses. As much as I hate to see Mickey's go, I think Bonnie has the right to sell her business to whomever she wants. I support the Planning Commission to work with the new potential owner of Mickey's toward authorizing the special land use permit and approving the site plan. I trust this will be done in good faith and ensuring all requirements are met regardless of public opinion. Mickey's will be missed, but perhaps it's an opportunity for someone else to purchase the equipment and other assets from Bonnie to reopen a Mickey's somewhere else than Celine. Thank you for your consideration in this manner. Note that I have no interest, financial or otherwise, in the new business that has offered by Mickey's. To make it clear, I am not interested in marijuana dispensary. I also have no financial interest in Mickey's, but I do enjoy their ice cream and other treats. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions." The next one is from Thomas Kozinski. It says, "I apologize for my tardiness in addressing this, as I just found out about this proposal. Is Celine really considering a dispensary as an option? I have not had time to do any research on the subject, so I have no hard facts, but this seems like a bad idea. How many jobs will this create? Two dozen low-paying jobs, tops? Are they going to run delivery around town? Maybe we can kill two birds with one stone and have all the pizza delivery drivers run the weed too. Less traffic on our failing roads would be nice. What kind of tax revenue for our city? Maybe we can finally fix the water quality. What kind of problems? We already have illegal drug problems, Celine. We don't really need any more help on this one. Seriously, what does this say about our community? The failed project at, at the Oates Deep Dodge? The failed hotel by Ace Hardware? I guess this falls right in line with all the dollar stores and secondhand shops and old rundown apartment buildings. Maybe we can pursue finding some pawn brokers and check and go, check and go businesses as well. I understand that pot is considered a medicine, legal, and there's this movement to de-stigmatize it. Again, with no research on this, it seems to me that this just invites traditional issues surrounding marijuana use. What is wrong with another empty store in Celine? At least this one is not covered in Tyvek Wrap. This may be uneducated, antiquated thoughts, but I would urge the Celine does not allow this business to operate." This one's from Hillary Connors. "I am against another marijuana dispensary in Celine. Since it has been legalized relatively recently, the laws and limits are still trying to catch up. I think it is a very poor decision-making that drives too many of these decisions. Whatever it is, it should be family-friendly." The next is from Dan, oh, it's the last one, Dan Colander. It's a City Council, or I guess the Planning Commission. This is Dan Colander from Dan's Downtown Tavern. "I truly believe that the transaction between Bonnie and the two gentlemen to purchase Mickey's property should be allowed and should be approved. I believe that Celine will support two dispensaries. I also believe that this council did approve marijuana dispensaries on both the east and west side to Celine and not the downtown area. I don't believe that the Celine property that Loom wants to purchase should be the only dispensary allowed. Competition is always good. I also believe in entrepreneurs and starting your dream or new business. I ask, I ask this board, how many pizza places do we have? How many restaurants? How many salons? How many coffee houses? How many bakeries? A lot of people have made some pretty negative comments about Mickey's closing, that they would miss Mickey's, that Bonnie isn't doing the right thing. As a friend of Bonnie, I know the whole story. I know what she's gone through in her six years in business. The first year, she had to replace the whole roof. The second year, she had to put in a new HVAC system. Then she had a good year, and then COVID hit. Two years she has done pretty good, but trying to get employees and help, opening, closing, et cetera, has been rough. So along comes an offer that allows Bonnie, at 68 years old, to finally be able to retire and spend some time with her grandchildren and her family. If people miss Mickey so bad, then buy the equipment and keep it rolling, but I ask the count, the board to please allow this transaction and approve this transaction. Bonnie deserves it. I believe that this transaction should be allowed to go through and should be approved. Public hearings, 22-10. Application from Romero Bari of A&amp;M and BH Industries LLC for a special land use for medical marijuana provisioning center in the C3 district located at 751 West Michigan Avenue, Celine, Michigan, 48176, parcel number 18-18-01-325-007. We have a report dated April 2022. We have a report dated April 20th, 2022, from Planner Auerbach. Would you like to go through it?
Sure, thank you. My name is Mike Auerbach with Carlisle Wartman Associates. We're the planning consultants for the city. And as mentioned, you have a copy of our April 20th review in your packet. Our comments in this review are largely similar to our last review, which was dated March 17th. The only difference being is that the curbside ordering component of this use that was originally proposed has now been withdrawn. So to recap for the commission and the audience, what's being proposed tonight with this application is a medical marijuana provisioning center on a half-acre property in an existing commercial building that is roughly 1,350 square feet. The proposal's not going to involve any changes to the building footprint. So the use consideration is the city reviewing the proposed use of property and determining whether or not it meets the applicable ordinance requirements to allow, to allow that land use. The city doesn't regulate the sale of property. The limits of its permitting process are allowing when and where certain legal land uses can be permitted. Generally speaking, if a land use meets the requirements of the ordinance, it must be approved. Medical marijuana dispensaries are classified as a special land use. Special land uses are discretionary, meaning they have an additional criteria that the city will evaluate them to determine their appropriateness in a specific location. But again, if those criteria are demonstrated to be met, then the city needs to approve that use. So the consideration tonight, or the process for the special land use approval was previously mentioned, that the planning commission will review the application and the special land use criteria, which are established in Section 903 of the city zoning ordinance. And then will make a recommendation to council about whether the proposal meets those criteria and whether the commission recommends any conditions of approval. With a special land use, the commission can recommend conditions that the city council could then approve that would help safeguard the intent of the zoning ordinance and a particular use's compatibility, both with the goals of the city's master plan and adjacent surrounding uses. And for reference, in addition to that special land use approval, any special land use applicant will also have to obtain site plan approval, which includes all the details of the proposed parking, landscaping, ingress and egress utilities that'll be evaluated by the city engineer. Any applicant would have to go through that process, as the applicant here tonight will as well. In addition to that, after obtaining site plan approval and special land use approval, the city and state also require annual license. That'll be reviewed and renewed each year to ensure compliance with how medical marijuana facilities are allowed to operate in the state. And additional details will be reviewed with that application. That'll include an order control plan and a security plan. That has to include details about how marijuana is transported, how sales are accounted for, how it's packaged, and again, that'll be reviewed every year. So to bring it back to the public hearing, again, the consideration for this hearing is the special land use. And as I mentioned, the requirements that a special land use needs to meet, needs to meet to be approved are established in Section 903. The first criterion is that the proposed use will be harmonious in accordance with the general objectives or any specific objectives of the master plan. So the proposed provisioning center is located in what the master plan designates as a general business future land use area. The intent of the general business future land use category is to serve the large needs of the community for both convenience and comparison goods. So a wide variety of retail and service-related uses are permitted in general business classified properties, and they're primarily located along the city's major corridors. So in our review, given that the proposed use now no longer involves a curbside retail or a curbside sales component that was initially proposed, that customers would be able to stay in their car and they would be served in their vehicles. Instead, that's been withdrawn, as the applicant indicated in a letter to the city, a letter dated March 29th. So this use will, in a sense, be largely similar to other retail and service uses that have just indoor sales space. So in our review, the proposal is consistent with the master plan objectives that are applicable to the property. The second criteria is that the use will be designed, constructed, and operated in a manner that's harmonious, both in appearance and with the existing intended character of the general vicinity. So as I mentioned, the applicant has withdrawn that curbside ordering component and with limiting the use to only indoor sales, that is generally comparable in character and intensity to other commercial uses that are permitted in the district. There are some minor parking questions that we mentioned in our review. The first is how many employees will be anticipated to be on-site during a peak shift? The applicant mentions 25 employees in total will be hired, but for parking and traffic impacts, we would like to know how many employees will be parked, could be parked on-site at a peak shift. In addition to that, how many, what, we'd also like, or suggest that the applicant provide an estimate of the anticipated weekend customer traffic. The applicant did previously provide weekday trip estimates. And in a peak hour, those estimates approximate that roughly eight to seven vehicles will enter and exit the site within a given hour. That doesn't necessarily equate to how many parking spaces will be occupied at a given moment, but it gives an approximation of how much traffic this use will generate. The last thing we'd like to clear, we would suggest the applicant clarify is whether or not those estimates are, were developed with or without the curbside component in mind that's since been withdrawn. So provided those items are addressed, we, in our assessment, the proposal meets the second criteria. For the third, the proposed use shouldn't be hazardous or disturbing to existing, avoiding nearby uses, either those existing or reasonably anticipated in the future. The applicant's provided both a detailed security plan and order control system details that outline how both odor, sales, and security will be managed on-site. In our assessment, those, those details are acceptable, and we don't anticipate any hazards resulting from, from approval. For the fourth criterion, the commission will need to find that the proposal will be an improvement in relation to the property itself and those in the immediate vicinity. Again, given the intensity of the use is comparable to other commercial uses, the ongoing investment in the property would meet that criterion. Lastly, the fifth criterion has to do with whether or not the use will have any inordinate demand for public services. We defer to the city's engineer for comment, but don't anticipate any issues. And lastly, or the sixth criterion, will the use create any excessive additional costs? Again, we don't anticipate that that'll be an issue. And then lastly, the use needs to be consistent with the intent and purpose of the ordinance and comply with all the specific standards adopted by the city. So again, as previously mentioned, the, the curbside ordering component, in our last review, we discussed it wasn't entirely clear that that activity could be permitted. Now that is, that has been withdrawn, provided the parking issues that are still outstanding are addressed, we don't see any issue with the use as proposed in terms of compliance with the ordinance. And again, the commission can, as a special land use, recommend conditions. Those could be an evaluation in, in a year's time of the, of the parking and whether or not enough parking is available on-site to accommodate the proposed use. With any condition, it has to be tied to furthering some ordinance objective or requirement. So that, that is just an example of one condition if there's still concerns about parking. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Couple of questions. One, looking at the, well, just the site plan before I get into the use issue. When you're talking about side yard setbacks and green space and so forth, looking at the plan currently, it seems as though pavement is going to go right up to the edge of the property. Looking at the one original site plan shows a 10-foot setback, and as you look at the existing one, or the new proposal, that has asphalt right up to the edges. Have those conditions been met in terms of the allowed setback? I know this is a preliminary, but how will that be addressed? That's one question.
I'm not sure which side you were referring to. Was it the, the side with the building?
Be the west side? Because when you look towards where this building is, there is green space. It runs down this side. This, where the original house was, and once it's removed, it appears that this has got asphalt all the way right up to the, up to the side yard. And I don't believe that's allowable.
I would have to check on that. The, I know the parking, there is a setback requirement for parking spaces, which is five feet, which this would meet. Part of the reason that landscaping may not be proposed on that side is that that, because of the slope. I believe there's a change in grade between the adjacent property. It may not be room to accommodate landscaping, but I'd have to check on the, if there's a setback requirement for pavement, and we could adjust that in the final site plan.
My question being is that it should be treated similar to the building to the west of it, because that building was built and repurposed less than 10 years ago. So that lot is meeting compliance, and this one should also too. So that's one concern. The other one, which was brought up, I guess I'd have to understand what the task force had decided to define as what is a school and whether or not a daycare slash preschool defines as a school underneath our current ordinance, apologies. So I don't know who can interpret that, whether it's our attorneys or whether Ms. Ltoo may comment on that, or how we would handle that.
So that, that may be a question you'd need to direct to your attorney. What I can say is that the city's ordinance requires a 1,000-foot setback from school property, and to read from the ordinance here, for the purpose of this article, school means a public-private denominational or parochial school. So to skip ahead, the youngest age group, or the youngest, they include in their definition what is termed here as developmental kindergarten. So these require, the state also adopts, or this setback requirement comes from the state as well. The language the state uses is that marijuana facilities need to be set back 1,000 feet from private, public-private school providing education in kindergarten or any grades 1 through 12. So that's the language in both the state and local requirements, and it would be a question for your attorney about whether or not the preschool's included.
Thank you. That's it for my questions right now.
And now we have a memo dated April 25th, 2022, from City Manager O'Toole.
Thank you. So my memo largely summarizes in simpler language the comments from Planner Auerbach and includes a comment from the city engineer regarding the item to which he deferred, which was regarding public facilities. Prelimarily, it's viewed as a use that is consistent with the existing demands on the public utility system, and it is not anticipated to, to present more of a burden. We would suggest that the commission consider a condition, though, that the city engineer or our engineering consultants formally review those utility connections as part of any final site plan approval to confirm compliance with that intended special land use requirement. Again, the, the commission here today is charged with considering whether they want to recommend, not recommend, or recommend with conditions to city council, who will ultimately make a determination regarding special land use.
Any questions for the city manager? I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the report dated April 20th, 2022, from City Planner Auerbach, and the memo dated April 25th, 2022, from City Manager O'Toole.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Applicant developer comments, limited to 10 minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sean Minzor, again, on behalf of AMN B&amp;H. To answer the questions about the parking spaces, now that I've had a chance to think about things, and now that we've eliminated the curbside component, we're envisioning at most five employees at a time on a shift, as little as two, two to five employees at a time. On a peak shift, maybe five employees on a Monday morning, maybe two. Was there any other questions, Mr. Auerbach, that you wanted answered?
Some estimate of the weekend, anticipated weekend traffic. I know you'd provided these, some numbers here. You have to spend some time to review it.
Yeah, and I'll absolutely put you in touch with our engineer. And those don't include a curbside component, I don't believe. Really just here to answer any of your questions. Like I stated previously, it was not our intention to come here and shut down a staple in this community. We were simply looking, as investors, looking for a location for our cannabis dispensary. And it just happened to be Bonnie's location, and she's been very pleasant to work with. And I just hope you guys all know, we'll be very pleasant to work with as well. We're looking to follow all regulations, all guidelines, all ordinances that the city has. So we just hope that you consider this and give us a recommendation for city. And I believe that city planning, not city planning, but the city council, that'll be a whole nother ordeal that we'll have to deal with. But I hope today, you guys leave today comfortable recommending this to that body. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant and developer? I need a motion to open the public hearing at 7:45 PM.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. All public comments to be heard, limit of three minutes per person. If anybody would like to come up and have a comment. This is your time.
Just come, come to the podium. We need you on the record, sir. No, no Q and A. No. If you have a concern or question, you're welcome to ask it from the podium, and we may be able to address it during the course of our meeting. But we don't do a back and forth during public hearings or during the public comment period.
My name is Mike Cowie. I own some property that's going to be directly behind this, this business. My main concern is security. My main concern is that it's going to remain a cannabis distribution center and not become a wholesale house for anything and everything that becomes CBD-related and things like that. The traffic, I believe, is going to be horrendous. I hope that the planners take into consideration that the traffic, the exit and exit, entrance and exits to that building will be horrendous at, at peak travel times. Is there just going to be one entrance and one exit to that building? Is there going to be a secondary? I worry about people parking on my property and walking around the fenced-in area, which I hope it will be around the business, and, and parking and smoking in my business. I have clients that I have to ensure that their valuables and their safety in their business are going to be safe from any kind of riffraff that might develop from this kind of a, a business. Again, I'm concerned about the traffic, the in and out in front of that business. I know I get gas at the local gas station, and to turn west out of that during prime time, prime traffic areas is, is very difficult. So I hope you take into consideration the traffic and the security that will be required for that business to, to guarantee the safety of all businesses and people that live and work in that area. Thank you.
I intend on staying in this city for a very long time. And if the congruency between city planning and developer could get a little better between employees there, if that's a takeaway from that, that would be nice to have something concrete involved with that so that the people know, who are interested in knowing, know what is going to happen eventually. We're in a little bit of a change of times. The people like me, who are younger, I see weed totally differently than the older generation does, and I don't know how to make of that. I work for a lot of people who like and don't like it, and I, I don't really know what to say about- say about it, other than it's like, it's just changing. And maybe it's me getting older and growing up in this city and figuring out things for myself as a new homeowner, or maybe it's something that is observable, and it is changing faster at this rate than it used to. I would like to see Celine stay prosperous. I would like to see our police force be able to handle it adequately. We do have some new hires, as some of our veterans have left. And so dealing with that may be a little bit of an issue. That also presents a questionable scenario in today's times, where if you say, videotape or do anything crazy, it is out there for everyone to see. And I, I would like to stay away from that stuff. I've chosen to stay offline, which is why I didn't know this was happening. And I, I believe in communication between neighbors and friends. I believe your friend group is a huge component of how you interact with other people, and I think Celine has given me a blessing that others do not have, that I am very grateful for and never take for granted. And I would like to keep that for my kids when I do have them down the road, because they will be born here. And it's my great intent to have, and I would like to see anything and everything possible to keep this place, the place that I grew up in. And I am only 25, yes, but there is a lot of life ahead of me, I hope. And I hope that you guys, as people who are most likely older than me, will also see that benefit to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back in March, when we had this first meeting, open public meeting, gentleman who's coming in to representing this dispensary said, you know, spent about seven to eight days there, got to know the community. He did. We have business people tonight that are in that area that are not okay with this. There's no harmonious relationship. You still don't know whether or not, whether you consider this daycare or school. It has young fives, preschool-aged kids, kids that are going into kindergarten, regardless they're children, they're children. Daycare. It's, it's not even 20 yards away from this place, maybe 30, I don't know, but it's, it's close. And then you have this gentleman over here come and talk about his business. Another business talks about, you know, the foot traffic going back to the apartments. There's no harmonious relationship here. You know, we, we approved Loon, and I, I supported Loon so much because they were transparent. They came, they've been coming in since the fall, since right, you know, they said, this is what we want to do, this is where we want to go. They were very transparent about it. There was no transparency about this at all. There's none. This is not a great location for this. Daycare, tight curb cut right there, foot traffic everywhere. People are just not certain about it, were scared. And I, I don't care what the gentleman said, but you can't come in this community and build when, there's no harmonious relationship. You know, yes, you can come here, this is not the place.
Thank you.
My name's Matt McComb. My ties to Celine date back to January 2015, when I purchased my first tax and accounting practice located right off Main Street. Although I've purchased some other practices, and my practice is now located just up the road on Liberty and Wagner, at the corner of Liberty and Wagner, I still serve a great deal of businesses and citizens here in Celine. One of those being Pete Tormina, the previous owners of Mickey's. I have been in communication with Pete about this, and although he was, he is sad about it, he, he agrees that business owners have the right to do what they need to do with their own properties. I introduced my mom to Pete to help orchestrate the sale of Mickey's back in December 2016. Bonnie risked everything in order to purchase Mickey's in the real estate. She sold her home with 30-plus years, liquidated her retirement and savings account to come up with the funds to purchase Mickey's. Celine has already approved operational, operation of medical and recreational marijuana and, and facilities within the city. And they doubled down on those policies when they unanimously voted to sell a city-owned lot to another dispensary, as they should have. Dispensaries bring a lot of benefits to the community, including additional tax revenue that can be used in, in, in the ways to help support the community. They bring employment opportunities, they bring property development, and they bring, provide a safe way to consume or purchase marijuana for medical or recreational use. I do understand that the community is sad about losing Mickey's, as they should be, and that, that this is the driving factor in opposition to the sale. Please know Bonnie does sympathize, as you've seen, in her decision to sell was not made lightly. However, there is opportunity to, to create another Mickey's here if somebody would want to. And there are assets to purchase that are, no profit to Bonnie, if, if people are interested in, in really interested in, in bringing Mickey's and letting Mickey's survive. But regardless of Mickey's fate tonight, the, the vote on the approval of the special land permit located at 751 West Michigan should be approved unanimously. This is a privately-owned property, and Bonnie has the same right to sell her property like the city has to sell theirs, or any other property owner has to sell theirs. I understand this is just an approval to go on to the next stage, but this location meets all the requirements set forth, and the buyers have done everything needed for this approval. In conclusion, Bonnie risked everything and has worked extremely hard her entire life, especially the last six years at Mickey's. She deserves a chance to reap the benefits of the risk she took and the hard work she put in. To re, to retire with financial peace has been her goal, the reason she took those risks, and the reason she has decided to sell this property. Denial of this special land use would literally be stealing her retirement. Please vote for the approval of that tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just got a couple of things. The parking, I don't think the parking's going to be any more busy than what we are at Mickey's right now. I think the parking's going to improve there, because he's redoing the whole entire parking lot and the entrance and everything at Mickey's. That shouldn't have anything to do with it. About the harmoniously, or whatever about the community, yet nobody's really giving him a chance to even be harmonious with anybody. They're all just dogging him, left and right. The council made this change. They asked for it, basically, for medical marijuana and not recreational marijuana to come into their town. It would benefit their town. They are going to have security at that place. If they're worried about security, the security's going to be there. They've already told you guys that. I don't know. There's a liquor store right down the street from me. How come that was allowed? There's no worse than marijuana, and this is legal marijuana and legal medical marijuana to help people that need it as well. Change is hard. I get it. Change is hard. But, but this new building would not be the first thing that people see when they come into Celine. There's, there's, the liquor stores even before that, just to let you know that. I think that's worse than the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana. A lot more is done in harm, in my opinion, with, with alcohol than it is with marijuana. But anyways, the change is hard. Parking lot, I don't think there's going to be a, I think it's going to be better. Anyways, security, they already got that taken care of. I don't think there should be a reason for that. I do feel I should be able to sell to my people that offered it to me for a very, very generous amount, so I can retire. And I think they did everything that they, they were asked. I think they've had their i's dotted and their t's crossed in this thing. So I'd ask you to, to please consider it. Thank you.
I would like you to consider future land use compared to current land use. The property is very close in proximity to residential area, and that's it. Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, if there's no additional public comments, I would move to close the public hearing at 7:56 PM.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. All right. Comments, question from Planning Commission members?
For me, I was hoping that everything had been vetted, but I'm concerned about this daycare and how it falls underneath our definition of a school. And if we don't have a clear understanding of that at this point, I'm unsure how we can move forward.
I can address that.
Great.
I am on the line. I just wanted to say, Tom Forshee with Dickinson Wright, I'm an attorney for the city. When, when you're ready, I can address that.
Absolutely.
Tom, if it would be of benefit, I did look up the state record as well for the license for that facility. They are an age range of six weeks to four and a half years.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The licensing for that facility lists six weeks to four and a half years.
Oh, okay. Thank you, thank you. You know, the, the ages aside even, a daycare center would not meet the definition of a school as it's defined in our, our ordinance. And if, if there were any problem at the state level, that, that would come through their state licensing, but I, I suspect that is not the case. But our definition of school, which we did go to great care to say what a school actually is, just so that we can avoid misinterpretation, it's, it's developmental kindergarten, which is a very specific thing, and kindergarten through 12. So daycare is not included in school. So it would not prevent, it would not create a buffer that would prevent this.
Which would supersede the state's definition on the application?
Well, they have to get both a, a local license and, and approval and state license and approval. So they have to have both. So if they failed either one of those, it, it couldn't operate, but I, I don't believe it will fail either of them.
How would the state know that, that daycare center is in that location if it was not provided to them?
I, you know, the state uses whatever method that they use. I don't know what their method is to, to make determinations, but, you know, they have their own definition, and so when it goes through their licensing, you know, it's really not our concern what the state does, other than if they issue them a preliminary approval or an approval. They'll have to get both eventually, but we can only really, at the Planning Commission level, put it through our ordinance and, and say what our ordinance defines a school as.
If I may, I can answer this question if you guys would like.
It's up to the chair. Sure.
I can answer this question. The state has a default requirement of K through 12. The municipalities have a right to modify that, and the municipality's version of it supersedes any of the state's versions. So if your requirement was added daycare, it could supersede the state's requirements. But at a minimum default, the state's requirements are K through 12.
Thank you.
That's my question for right now. Any additional questions?
I do have one. I know last time, whenever we spoke, there was an application submitted to MDOT for the circulation, for the ingress and egress of the single lane in and out of the property. Have you received any correspondence approvals from MDOT?
Not yet, no. But I did provide the disclosure to Mr. Auerbach, and as soon as we get some sort of correspondence, I can immediately provide that to you all, or Mr. Auerbach directly. At this stage, the, the receipt, that the application's been submitted, is all that's required.
Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, can I make one comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Just one, one issue that I, I keep see coming up over and over, and it, it may be a source of confusion, is the comparison between what is the use being applied for right now and what the current use is. And I think there's a misunderstanding amongst some that you can compare the two, that you're, you're trying to pick which one's better, or what some hypothetical use in the future might be better or worse. But really, the, the ice cream shop and, and its fitness for that spot is really irrelevant to the Planning Commission's decision. They have to, you have to take the application that's before you and evaluate it using the standards, independent of any other use that may exist there now or in the future. So the, the use that's, they have a right to come before you with a special land use and to propose that use, and the Planning Commission's going to, independent of anything else, go through the standards and determine whether the standards are either met or not met. So I just wanted to clarify that, just because that was a, an issue that I kept hearing coming up over and over. And I'm also happy to answer any other questions that you have as we go through this.
Thank you, attorney. Does anybody?
Other question. When we talked about not having curbside or any type of walk-up service, do we need to clarify in any condition that says that transactions must occur inside?
I don't believe so. I think that's, that's clear in the application.
I just wanted to double-check that and make sure that doesn't, because that is currently a walk-up building, so, and there to clarify that. The other question being consumption. Of course, just understanding the current code or the way it's written with the state, consumption cannot happen on the property at all, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. I do have a concern on the preliminary site plan in terms of the side yard setbacks and what's identified here. It just does not appear to me that this drawing takes those into consideration. So I don't know how I would vote to approve the preliminary site plan if I don't feel comfortable with the setbacks on this. And I don't know if somebody can verify, when I look at this from the side setbacks, that that is properly set in place according to what's the development conditions for that property, including after the removal of that house. I know there's some non-conforming issues on that property, but once that house comes down, I have some concerns, and I'm not the one that should be evaluating it. It should be our planner or our city engineer to clarify that all the setbacks and everything are correct on this property.
We didn't see any issues with the setbacks, in, at least is at this stage. But like I mentioned, I'll have to check on whether or not there's a, a requirement specific to the drive aisle asphalt that would need to be met. We, we did mention the parking space requirement, which the applicant addressed in a revision of their site plan. But the only, the only requirement I would need to check then is that whether the city has an ordinance requiring a setback for asphalt.
And I'm just curious, because we had talked about the gateway, and I don't know if this property falls underneath the gateway requirements for all four corners of our city, so that we're encouraging green space and some of the other things, so I want to make sure that we aren't over paving a lot that really should become more of a, as people want, a more welcoming entrance into the city. That's it for me.
Ma'am Chair, if I may. City manager, primarily for the public's benefit, can you restate in your recommendation what you think the one condition to be, one condition should be relating to this subsequent motion to recommend a city council with conditions, the approval of special land use permit?
Certainly. So I do reiterate reference to the memo from Planner Auerbach, and all of the recommendations contained in my own memo, which also include that the city engineer or an engineering consultant confirm compliance with what is Section 905, Number 5, of the City of Celine zoning ordinance regarding special land use approvals. And those, that summary information is provided in the memo for reference. It's also per Planner Auerbach's recommendation that MDOTs, the MDOT review and any comments be considered, so both engineering comments and MDOTs would be considered.
So there's actually two conditions then?
My memo outlines six conditions. Do you have a copy of that?
I do. I just want to primarily ask the question for the public's edification, and then for our city clerk to get the correct verbiage down.
If you'd like me to list those, okay, certainly. So the six conditions listed in my memo are adherence with the recommendations of the Carlisle-Wortman review dated April 20th, 2022, and the Planning Commission liaison letter from City Manager O'Toole dated April 25th, 2022. Number two, confirmation that the anticipated number of staff on-site during a peak shift and the anticipated weekday and weekend trip generation aligns with the criteria for Section 905, Number 2, of the City of Celine zoning ordinance. Satisfactory, number three, satisfactory view of the city engineer or an engineering consultant of final site plan materials for compliance established or, and described in Section 905, Number 5, of the City of Celine zoning ordinance, and incorporation of any comments from city engineer or city, or engineering consultant. Number four, incorporation of any comments from city engineer or engineering consultant, and MDOT for compliance with Article 14. and MDOT for compliance with Article 14 of the City of Saline zoning ordinance regarding site access and circulation for final site plan review. Number five, incorporation of detailed sign information for final site plan review. And number six, provision of elevation plans for final site plan review.
Mr. Mayor, does that address your questions?
It does. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Does anybody on the board, on the commission, have any additional questions for Planner, City Manager, or the City Attorney, or the developer?
All right. We have a motion on the table to recommend to Saline City Council to approve, not approve, or approve with conditions, the application from Ramario Bari of A&amp;M and BH Industries LLC for a special land use for Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center as in the C-3 district located at 751 West Michigan Avenue, Saline, Michigan 48176, parcel number 18-18-01-325-007, with the following conditions as outlined by City Manager O'Toole. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to recommend, Madam Chairman, citing the six conditions articulated in the city manager's memo and that she just expressed from the floor, or from the dais.
Do we have a second? Two more seconds?
All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Onto unfinished business. 22-09, application from Ramario Bari of A&amp;M and BH Industries LLC for preliminary site plan for a new medical marijuana provisioning center, remodeling the existing 1,350 square foot building and adding 21 new parking spaces located at 751 West Michigan Avenue, Saline, Michigan 48176, parcel number 18-18-01-325-007. We'll start with the report dated April 20, 2022, from City Planner Auerbach.
Thank you. Just skipping ahead to the site plan considerations section of our report, preliminary site plan is required to be submitted in conjunction with the special land use application. The preliminary site plan is conceptual and gives a general layout of a proposed or existing buildings and use and operations, parking, and ingress and egress. Additional details, like the specific landscape requirements and lighting sidewalks, will be assessed during final site plan review. So in terms of applicable setback requirements, this is located in the C-3 general business district. We have a table in our review listing the lot area, side, front, and rear setbacks and coverage requirements. In our assessment, the existing building meets those requirements. An item that we could look into between now and final site plan review is both whether there is an applicable pavement requirement and also the submittal requirements, whether the site plan will need to be prepared by a licensed surveyor to get confirmation of the existing and proposed setbacks. But at this point, we see no issues with the proposal in terms of the dimensional requirements. As a developed site, we have no comment about topography. The one exception of the slope of the general area declining in grade from west to east may prohibit additional landscaping along the western lot line, but again, that'll be looked at in greater detail for final site plan review. In terms of building location, we see no issues. The proposal will demolish the existing, what we presume is residential structure on-site, which will eliminate a nonconformity. Besides that, we have no issues with the site arrangement. In terms of parking, when a park, so, the number of parking spaces provided or that are required for each use are established in Section 1304 of the city zoning ordinance. And when a use is enlisted in that table, the zoning administrator can determine which use is most comparable to and apply those requirements. So in our assessment, a medical and dental office would be a comparable use, which would require one space for every 150 square feet of floor area. And given the size of the building, nine spaces would be required. I believe there's a typo in this report, 20 spaces are provided, which meets that requirement. For reference, some of the more conservative, or some of the uses that require the most parking under the city's ordinance are convenience stores, which require 100 square feet, one space for every 100 square feet of floor area. Pharmacies also require 150 square feet as the medical and dental office. So even if that 100 square foot floor area space requirement were applied, that would mean that 13 spaces were required for this site, which are available with the 20 spaces proposed. There's also one barrier-free space, which is what's required for ADA requirements. The applicant and their revised site plan addressed a setback issue we had previously mentioned by shifting the parking spaces from being flush against the lot line to removing some of the pavement to meet the five-foot setback requirement and to provide additional landscape screening along the south and east lot lines. No loading, no loading areas required for buildings under 2,000 square feet in floor area, so that space doesn't need to be provided. In terms of access and circulation, this is an existing site, so by the time of final site plan review, the applicant will need to identify all of the existing nonconformities as they apply to drive aisles, the access drive. Anything listed in the requirements under Section, or Article 14 of the city zoning ordinance will need to be at least identified with the planning commission to review, and then based on the recommendations of the city engineer, ourselves, and MDOT, those, any nonconformities would need to be corrected. So at this stage, the applicant's proposing two improvements that, in our assessment, will improve safety for vehicles entering and exiting the site. That is eliminating the two access drives and combining them into a single drive. In our assessment, that's an overall improvement that will allow for vehicles to enter and exit more safely. They're providing, the interior drive aisles and parking spaces meet the applicable dimensional requirements, and they're expanding the parking lot island in the center of the site, which will still accommodate those drive aisles and, in our assessment, avoid potential conflicts as vehicles circulate through the site and enter and exit. So we have no additional recommendations at this time regarding site access and circulation, with the exception that any items identified by the city engineer or MDOT are addressed. And to reiterate, the applicant has provided verification, they submitted an application to MDOT, which is all that's required in terms of the city zoning ordinance at the preliminary site plan stage. As far as safety paths and walkways, the sidewalk will be maintained along the site's frontage. The applicant will be eliminating the existing patio area and adding additional landscape plantings, I believe, street trees. Again, landscaping will be evaluated during final site plan review. That connecting sidewalk that'll connect the street sidewalk to the site isn't shown on the plan, that can be added later on, and we recommend that it, that some space be maintained between that connecting sidewalk and the access drive. We also suggest that the applicant consider a curbed sidewalk around the building, if that feasible, if feasible, depending on the proposed grade. In terms of landscaping, they've provided a landscape plan, again, that is a final site plan detail, but landscaping buffers are included along the eastern and southern lot lines. Again, they'll be adding landscape plantings along the, along the Michigan Avenue frontage. They've also provided details for dumpster enclosure that we'll review during, with the final site plan, but it appears to meet the city's requirements, and we don't see any issues. Lighting is also a final site plan requirement, a plan's been provided, but we'll review it in greater detail at the next stage. And we also recommend that signing, signage, and elevation plans be provided for the planning commission's review during final site plan. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Have any preliminary calculations been done for the impervious surface and the drainage on this property?
Regarding stormwater management specifically, no.
That's a big concern about this. This is the reason why I'm pushing back on the preliminary site plan. It seems that there's some major things missing.
So the, the city's, I'd have to take a deeper look at the city's lot coverage requirements, to see if they explicitly apply to any and all paved surface and what structures are or aren't included. But as far as the stormwater requirements, I know that's something the city engineer will look at during final site plan review. I would need to check to what extent they would need to make corrections to an existing site's storm system. I believe one of the considerations will be whether or not any additional off-site discharge will be proposed. That's not an engineer, but I, given the changes, I wouldn't imagine that any additional runoff would be created. But again, that'll be looked at by the city's engineer during final site plan review.
I guess I've been concerned that in the past, we've had some of that information addressed sooner than at final site plan review.
Okay.
We also have a memo from the city manager, calling O'Toole, dated April 25, 2022.
Regarding recommendations for the site plan approval, we largely defer to the memo from Carlisle-Wortman dated April 20, 2022, with the similar recommendation that any preliminary site plan include incorporation of review by the city engineer or an engineering consultant, and incorporation of any recommendations from that. Certainly, if you'd like to make a specific recommendation to include some sort of stormwater assessment by the city engineer at the time, that would be planning commission's prerogative. Certainly, we could include that condition as well. But those are largely summarized, the same ones summarized previously.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the city manager? We have a motion on the table to acknowledge receipt of the report dated April 20, 2022, from City Planner Auerbach, and the memo dated April 25, 2022, from City Manager O'Toole. Do we have someone to move?
Move to acknowledge receipt, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, ayes have it. Applicant developer comments base limited to 10 minutes. Floor is yours if you'd like to talk.
The applicant has no comments at this time, but would like to take any questions you guys have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, questions from planning commission members? I don't know if this is the place to say it, but City Manager O'Toole, I agree with Councilmember Gerebach about the stormwater management on-site. I do think that that needs to be reviewed, just the way that the site drains, to make sure it's not any worse and that stormwater is contained on-site. So I would like to add that as a condition to the memo.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
While generally that would be done during the final site plan process, because of the emphasis the city has put on stormwater infrastructure and stormwater management, I would also support that as a condition of approval this evening.
Great, thank you. All right. Anybody else? Any comments, questions?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for the, primarily for the public's edification, based on the statutes, I think by any objective measure, the development before us this evening meets the criteria for preliminary site plan approval. But I want to talk a little bit about the process moving forward. So earlier this evening, by a majority vote, Planning Commission did recommend to City Council the approval of a special land use permit, and it is the discretion of City Council to either approve or to deny those. As was articulated earlier, that will be considered by City Council at our May 16 meeting, which will be held here in council chambers. That begins at 7:00 PM, and we will afford the public an opportunity to speak at that time. Assuming that a motion to approve the preliminary site plan is approved this evening, I do want to note that no work can commence until a special land use permit has been approved, and subsequent to that, when a final site plan has been authorized for this development. And the scrutiny and criteria that we use for final site plan is more robust. So the city manager and planner can correct me if I'm wrong, but with the assumption that a motion to approve a preliminary site plan approves tonight, the applicant then needs to submit for final site plan approval. And once that packet is submitted, it generally takes between 30 and 60 days for staff, our planner, Carlisle-Wortman, OHM, and any other outside consultant to review it, before it's scheduled for a hearing and consideration by the city's planning commission. So if you're concerned or interested in this proposed development, you'll have several additional bites at the apple, so to speak. And if you'd like to be notified by the city clerk as to when this issue will be considered in the future by Planning Commission, please notify her, and she'd be happy to correspond with you directly. And also note that all of the support material that was provided to Planning Commission this evening, and that will be subsequently provided to Planning Commission or City Council, is available on minutes on demand, and you can access that free of charge at any time. So I guess I would conclude by saying this. This is not anywhere close to meeting, at least by my standard, approval for final site plan, but they're not asking for final site plan tonight. All the petitioner is requesting is approval of preliminary site plan, and I think based on the criteria, they have met that standard, and as such, I will be voting in favor of approving preliminary site plan with the conditions that were previously stated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And fortunately, this does occur. I disagree with the mayor, because I feel that this preliminary site plan, because of the water conditions and water runoff, I mean, in order to do that, should there need to be a retention pond or some other type of need on this property, it could create another nonconforming use, require a significant way of managing the water. To go forward without addressing it at this point and going into a final site plan may require variances and another or other things that I would rather have answered going forward before we spend a lot of time of both the developer and of our city staff after the fact. So I will be voting no on this night.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'm always eager to propose solutions and compromises, and so if it is the desire of the Planning Commission to do a slightly deeper dive on the whole stormwater management issue, I think City Manager O'Toole, if I can put you on the spot, that would either be evaluated internally by City Engineer Humphris, or we would engage an independent third party. Do you want to comment on that?
Correct, yes. Once those materials are supplied, we would likely engage the services of a third party to do the stormwater management review.
And do you know how long that process would take?
I don't, I don't necessarily want to commit, but a few weeks.
Okay. Theoretically, would it be available for consideration and review for our next scheduled Planning Commission meeting, which is currently scheduled for May the 11th?
It's entirely dependent on whether any additional materials would be needed from the developers for that, for a more formal review to occur.
Okay, then let me turn to the planner. Noting the comments that were just articulated by the city manager on the stormwater management issue, do you believe there's any deficiency in the applicant's submittals for either an independent third party or our city engineer to review their plan?
There doesn't seem to be any utility information about what existing infrastructure's on-site. There, the, the coverage would be a part of the runoff calculations. I would suspect more information would be needed, both about on-site facilities and what is in the vicinity that the site may impact.
Let me ask the petitioner, if I may. Do you think that you could expedite the necessary documents and material to staff and our, and/or an outside consultant?
I just, I got to say, I'm ignorant on what documents I'd need to present, but my engineers, our engineer is very sharp and can supply that information if needed. If you could just tell me exactly what you guys need from him, absolutely. We'd work on that diligently.
Right. Again, preliminary site plan is more the approval of a concept. I think it meets the standard, but in the spirit of compromise and comedy with my colleagues, if we would prefer to wait, have some additional evaluation down on the stormwater management issue, and then revisit this issue in a relatively short period of time, I would be amenable to that.
So you're asking for it to be postponed till the next? So you're asking for it to be postponed till the next meeting?
If that's your pleasure.
I'll make that motion.
Can you just tell me what your motion is, Councilmember?
Well, it would be postponing this, I don't think we have discussion on it. I think the direction is that we need the additional understanding of what water, the terminology is for what I'm going off on and that.
Yeah, my recommendation would be a motion to postpone it till the next meeting, which is scheduled from two weeks from today, May 11th, with a specific stipulation on the stormwater management issue. Would you concur with that, City Manager O'Toole?
I would concur that that's what you're saying. I cannot commit that we will have that material turned around in that time.
Sure.
Which we can at that time address at the next meeting if it needs to be postponed again. I mean, I can postpone it till a month from now, if that's more reasonable. I'd like to ask staff what they feel is needed for their ability to review this.
It's entirely dependent on coordinating with our consultants to determine what materials are deficient and the timeline that they require to turn it around.
If I may, if we're putting conditions on our plans before final approval and we have to meet all those conditions, couldn't we just make this another condition for final approval, rather than putting this over a month and having us do things that we're going to do anyway? We'd just like to move the process along, and you can make that a final condition of our final approval, without any variances or anything of that nature.
Yes, please.
So for reference, by the time of final site plan review, all of the items listed in Section 08, 805 of the ordinance needs to be provided. That section details what needs to be included with preliminary and final site plans. Without having been working with the city for that long, it's my understanding that it's more policy is what gets submitted with preliminary versus final site plan. But Item 5 in that section has to do with stormwater and gives more detail about what needs to be included with a drainage and retention, detention plan. So that would be, for Council's, or Commission's reference, that would be something that would need to be submitted with the final site plan application. Again, I think it's just more of a question of what the city's practice is with what's required for preliminary versus final, and whether that's a final site plan versus an item versus something that should be provided now.
And if I, I just may echo those points. I am not entirely sure that what's being requested would require a special condition on the preliminary site plan, since it's already a requirement of the final site plan.
I mean, I guess if there's any additional discussion or thoughts on moving forward tonight?
I do have a question about your, the parking spaces and everything like that, to address Mr. Gerbach's comment. Since we have more than enough spaces, if there was a reason to have a basin, could the applicant take away some of the spaces to address for a pond to be installed or underground stormwater detention basin? I mean, they're not just going to raise the house, they're going to have to fix the lot as well, correct? Or, in your opinion?
If we're, if the plan's approved based on the parking standard we've recommended, then yes, there would be room to eliminate some impervious surface. One thing I can't account for that the city engineer will be able to is the addition of that parking lot island that'll be landscaped and pervious. So I'm sure that that could have, be a factor in the stormwater utilities needed.
Thank you.
I think, Madam Chair, just as a procedural note, and Mr. Gerbach, Mayor Potem Gerbach can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe he did offer a motion to postpone. Do you still want to move forward with that motion, or would you like to retract?
I can retract it and vote however I feel is appropriate.
Does anybody have another, a different motion for the table?
Remind me, apologies if I'm being obtuse. There is one condition?
Two.
Two?
Two. So a condition of the adherence with the recommendations of the Carlisle-Wortman Review dated April 20th, 2022, and the Planning Commission Liaison Letter from City Manager O'Toole dated April 25th, 2022. And I propose the condition of the stormwater management to be reviewed. Obviously, it's part of final site plan review, but to show an emphasis on it for future, especially for the final site plan.
Then, Madam Chair, I'm willing to make that motion with conditions, noting two things. One, let's, if, assuming the motion passes, let's get the ball rolling on the storm management issue sooner, as opposed to later. Because that will be an item that I think this group will want to scrutinize and discuss robustly when we revisit final site plan approval in two or three months. And then the other item that I would note that, kind of to piggyback on something that Mayor Potem Gerbach said earlier, while this is a bit east of the traditional gateway in Celine, it is still an important parcel as you enter and exit along our western border. So I will be looking for some, well, I will be looking during the final site plan process for some additions and some features that make the parcel particularly attractive and appealing, not only for those who live in the vicinity, but also for those who are visiting our community. And again, with that, I made a motion to approve with conditions.
Have a second? Can I second?
Sure.
Second? All right. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
May.
The ayes have it. All right, moving on to, there are no discussion items? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to excuse the absence of Chair Carroll, Commissioner Beardsley, and Commissioner Troika?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:35 p.m.?
So moved? Plausic and?
Excellent, thank you. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting's done, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.